All right, I'm gonna open the minutes. Or the D E, see? Too much talk.
We have an appointment which is Sam. D E, we make out the agenda.
No reason, no. We'll see you at 10:00.
Yes, thank you.
So I'll bring you to our table.
June 30th is the D E deadline.
Okay.
I'm here to remind the board of selectmen that we need a decision ASAP if we're gonna take this property or not. Because there still remains a $1,700 unbalanced home account.
Okay.
Um, I wrote to TD Bank today and I got shuffled around. Usually they pick up the phone and talk to me, but I guess there's been a lot of regulations and changes. And I had to send them an email this time describing the question and they go back instead of 35 business days. So we don't know if TD Bank is going to be paying this balance or not.
Gotcha.
Um, we have a meeting on, what's the next meeting, the 18th?
16th.
16th?
16th.
16th? But I'd really like to have a decision kind of firmed up. No later than the 16th because we're meeting on the 30th.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
So the D E is June 30th?
June 30th.
Okay, and you want a decision by the 16th?
16th. I have a decision, no later than the 16th. So if you need to make a site visit, if you need to make conversations with the owner, if you need to do whatever you guys are gonna do, no later than the 16th.
Sam, what's the latest communication with the owner?
She came in and paid partial, part of the bill about a week and a half ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any conversation about more payments?
She did not, no.
Pretty much.
I commended her for making payments, she said thank you and that was it. So, but that was the first, there was a payment a month and a half prior to that. Now we have this payment, so if we're waiting a month and a half for another, champion, it's not gonna, it's gonna be too late.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to, is that a discussion to be held in greater detail in the executive session? So that we can get all the details or kind of what's the?
I believe everything is met up public record. So she has not paid the bill, she's not satisfied the legal tax bill and liens.
Yeah.
And the board of selectmen ultimately have the decision to accept a deed from tax collector or not accept a deed from tax collector.
Right.
But I do not wanna get to June 29th and
Right.
Because we don't have a, we don't have a public meeting between the 18th when we're doing it and the 30th when we're meeting.
Right.
So 16th.
So June, the June, uh, what did you say, 16th was the last meeting?
So I made a decision about the 16th. I'll give you a little accept a deed or not. Hopefully it'll be a moot point by then, but we just, we need these whole things lined up as a contingency.
Right.
If it doesn't happen.
Personally, I'd like to come in and make sure I refresh myself about all the who've talked to who when and what bills were paid before the 16th and we can decide on the 16th.
That one's due at 10:00?
Sure.
If we give you a affirmative answer on the 16th?
Yeah.
Alright, because I'd like to, I'd like to go over it just to make sure I understand what's going on.
Sure.
Is that okay by you, Kyle?
Hmm.
Alright, and the best place to look at that information is in your office, Sam?
It's online, it's on the tax.
Oh, okay.
Because you can see these chronologicals, the most recent bill is on the top, so you have to go down to the 2023 lien, 2022 lien, but you can do transactions and I'll show you all the payments that somebody's made on the account. You can do that on.
Yeah.
Right, we'll do.
But she has received a D E notice and TD Bank has received a D E notice, so.
You get highlighted in pink, that's as good as it gets?
Thank you.
That goes to the top of the list?
Yeah. 16th.
Okay, 16th.
Alright.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Not on that, thank you.
Alright, cool.
Thanks. Thank you.
Right, appreciate it, Sam. It was on the big pile.
Yeah. Alright, Ken, what do you think?
I'd say sorry.
Who's the side of the year? Alright, first item looks like an accounts payable manifest to. Okay, alright, so I'll call this the number one. In the amount of $2,250.
Um, so who?
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. I brought up him this time.
I have an expert, just in case. And second account payable manifest in the amount of $20,266.96.
So who?
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye, that's, that sounds a little bit more like what we used to sign, what we used to sign.
Yes, it is.
Cal, I always kind of forget by the time we get to the meeting, but Mary has these generally on her desk in the afternoon of like today, so I could look at them before Friday. Right through the year. Okay, and you can take time during the meeting to look at them if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you can remind me some other Monday. Okay.
Alright, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of $52,766.17.
Uh, 52,000?
52,766 and 17 cents. Second, all those in favor?
Aye. Yep. It's on that one.
Thank you. Alright, next item, welfare manifest in the amount of $2,250.
So who?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. You can feel favorable things.
Calvin, think on that, it looks like.
That one did feel a lot better. Somebody who was unhoused and we found him housing.
Very good.
So we're getting real close to being done with this case.
Sounds good.
Yay. That's good all the way around.
Yep.
Alright, next item is a notice intent to cut water timber. It is map 229 lot 1 and lot 1 dash 1. And they would just sign it, right? Yes.
Oh no, we had one, we had one last meeting to do this.
Correct, this is it, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Did you check to make sure there was some on the line? Please.
At least I want you to step up, so. Good luck.
I asked Mary to switch back to blue.
Thank you.
Thank her, I know, do that.
It's like, it's a Pavlovian response.
We're just thinking the same thing.
Same, same, blue. You know where that is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Let me see what people cutting off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, so the next item is an abatement. Recommendation to 32 Hall Road, map 249 lot 16. The owner is all purpose storage can. Yeah, that's what. Alright, so I'm gonna let everybody read that before we discuss.
That's for Mandy, yes? I think at this time it would be good to say that. How much we appreciate the research that she puts and the expertise that she brings to preparing these documents she does. She does a good job.
Yes, she does. Can I make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion?
Um, I don't have as much expertise as Mandy, but I trust her judgment on this. Um, her numbers make it, make a compelling argument, so.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Yeah. Alright, then I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this abatement request.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abatement is denied. I think we just signed, now we see one group tab again, so.
Either giant step.
Alright, next item is an original one, yield tax levy. That's a timber tax. Yeah. Um, it's for map 227 lot 2, 221 dash 16. And it says 264 dash 18, no cuts, so I'm assuming that means they did not cut.
They did not cut.
Okay. And Ken, I think we just signed this, no?
Yes.
Three spots indicated.
Yes.
Nine doors.
Markers. Start.
Alright, next, it looks like this is a, an application for a veteran's exemption that was filed late. So Mandy has denied it under RSA 72 colon 33. It looks like it was filed about a week late. Actually, it was just filed today. And it was due on May May 27th.
Has this person filed before? Is this, I mean, we have people who file things and are habitually late, but is this a new?
It was usually one shot.
You don't?
Okay. You only have to file once, um, and then you get the credit. If someone hasn't filed, I mean, that's, this is, this person filed late. Then they can apply next year.
Oh, okay.
This does not need a motion, can you just?
No.
How many of these applications do we get per year for this town getting here?
Varies, um, we, we have numbers on what the total amount of credits that are that are received every year or, I guess, deducted every year. Would be get that information. In fact, I think it's sort of how we work.
Oh, okay. The town report is getting very well informed.
Hmm, yes, it, it is.
Is it actually a separate line? Of course, I don't have my, my town report here with me tonight now that it say, uh, well, home to this.
Uh, yeah. It is in here, let's see.
That's alright, I could.
It must vary because of different credit types of credits.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, on page 40, um, you'll see college exemptions, blind, handicapped, um, and then veterans.
Okay, thank you.
So all veterans' tax credit last year was $10,500. The veterans', the veterans' tax credit is $47,000. And the total disability veterans' tax credit is $15,100.
Good, thank you.
Alright, last item to sign is an appointment for Rush Maya. Say it again?
Maya.
Maya?
Yeah.
To the solid waste committee for a term of three years. Do we have an opening at the solid waste committee?
I don't know that we have a
There's not a limit.
Cap on probably members on the solid waste committee. I don't know.
Uh, he spoke at town meeting.
Was he the one that?
He spoke up and explained, um, he had a proposal for how to
Yeah.
retrofit the diesel trucks so that the hydraulics could run
Yeah.
um, on electricity. He seems knowledgeable, um, he's come to several meetings.
Okay.
And showed interest.
Good, very.
Quiet, I don't know if that counts for anything, but it's quiet.
Okay.
He also has connections or knowledge of, have you looked at works which might be helpful?
Sure. Alright, let's move on to minutes. We'll start with the May 19th public minutes.
So, the first suggestion is line 135. And, um, right now it just says that Megan spoke with DES. Um, the suggestion is to change it, um, say Megan spoke with, um, a DES representative as in a butter. To clarify that she spoke with some representative and that she was doing so as in a butter, not as a town official.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, yes. Um, next one is line 148. Uh, where it says, we'll share the results with DES and with DES and the town.
Hmm. That sounds pretty foreign.
And there's a couple grammatical ones that I'm gonna skip.
Okay.
Line 304, it says, um, when the reval happened in 2006, the taxes on the property jumped from 228 to 1, uh, 1,820. That was the same year he filed an abatement for his home. The suggestion is to clarify some of that, so that it will read, um, when the reval happened in 2006, the taxes on the undeveloped property in question jumped from 228 to 1,820. That was the same year he filed an abatement for the taxes on his home which abus the undeveloped property. So just kind of adding which properties are being spoken about.
Yeah.
Um, line 338, just, uh, where it says, wait until August, just add, um, after the Kinney affair.
Yeah.
And then line 374, um, Beth McGinn recommended against signing up in an email to the select board. Just switching that around to say, in an email to the select board, Beth McGinn recommended against signing up for program. Here's Sarge Energy proposed. And then there was another suggestion that I, um, so line 190, Beth suggested moving that whole item into the next section. But I think that is pretty significant overlap between the section about discussion of the Roy Clisco report and the section about discussing the purpose and direction of the solid waste committee. So I think if we get, if we start getting into which line should go in which section, I think we'll end up reorganizing too much of it.
Okay.
Um, so I don't think that we should do that.
That's fine. It's still in there, so that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so that is it for that one.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I would second that.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright, why don't we?
Thank you, Cal.
The, uh, May 19th, 2025 non-public session.
I know, I love getting stuff on the back. You don't always take it for good. No, that's good. Can I make comments on this? I don't imagine anybody's made. On lines 16 is just the, uh, or line 17. I guess it doesn't matter. I would have put, um, have heard a rumor that Okay. And then, and just take it off the end there because that, putting it at the end there makes it kind of, sounds like it confirms that it is. Okay. But the fact is we need to find out, so that's all, just that. Alright, so otherwise it's fine. Change that to we have heard a rumor that.
Yeah.
And remove, this is just a rumor at the end.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's, that's all, otherwise that's
Alright.
That's about our shortest non-public session ever, so.
Yep.
This is, this is fine.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Uh, second?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Why don't you hand those down?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Write on them, include that, so thank you, like, we will care of that. Thank you, sir.
Alright, that brings us to the May 22nd, May 25 minutes.
Alright, so we recommend the changes here. Um, the first one is on line 20. It says they hope Megan will be a good addition and hold the solid waste committee accountable. Um, that's just changing it to, they hope Megan will be a good addition and help the solid waste committee better their process for submitting project ideas. My remarks did say that, like, that actual phrase, hold the solid waste committee accountable, was used.
Okay.
So I don't know if, if you want to change that.
I didn't remember it that way, but if that's what your minutes say, you were writing at the time, so then that's fine. Okay. Um, I would question, I guess, accountable to what, to finish the thought, but, um, if that's not
That was not said.
referenced or said, then I would leave it as is.
Okay.
That's fine.
Um, so then line 75, where it says the select board will decide on one option at their next meeting, just adding at the end, after considering results of polling town employees.
Yeah.
And then the wrong one was grammar, so it was 75.
Okay.
Alright, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the minutes as amended.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Cal, as always.
Alright, that brings us to reports from select board reps on boards and committees. Anyone want to start us off?
You're the left, or, and you're the right.
I have to be this.
Go, go for it, let Cal start.
Alright, Calvin?
Pretty simple this month, I talked to Kevin, they didn't post, uh, they didn't have a meeting this month, a lot of people could, uh, enough would attend.
Or, um.
H T C.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but he did say there's an application coming from Chicago Village for a handicap brand. So they'll discuss that at the next meeting this month, or in June, yeah, it's June now. Uh, so that will get discussed, not much going on.
Yeah.
Um, and then he brought up the idea that, uh, refining more input as to what goes into town buildings or contracts. So the H T C kind of has a little bit more say or direction as to what materials or et cetera gets used. So it's a little easier to comply with the rules. Kind of expedite the process a little bit rather than playing back and forth. You kind of lay out X, Y, and Z, now you know what you gotta play with to start.
Oh, so the, the list of materials that the H T C would like to say they're going to come up with a list of what they want to see.
Right, so in terms of, you know, we're talking about the corruption, five different materials, you know, these are the five on our list. So that way we don't have the back and forth and we don't have to waste time in trying to determine what's acceptable or not. So that was pretty straightforward. Um, I reached out to Randy with the R E T committee. They don't plan on getting together, like, they don't want to do it till the fall. Once, uh, late July, his soccer will come back in and then the R E T committee will do soccer and they run the Halloween. And then they plan on having a meeting here in November to discuss budget as a public hearing.
Good.
So pretty straightforward.
Yep, sounds good.
Good.
That's it. Uh, and the school board is, thanks to, and can, so I haven't been one of those yet.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're very interesting, actually.
It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be interesting.
That's what I would bet you was. That's what I would bet you was.
Have you been at one this?
Yeah.
This, yeah.
All right, Beth?
All right, the energy committee has new energy. It is kind of a flip because I'm on energy committee and CCPC. So CCPC, that had the bulk of the people and the projects, and the energy committee had like three people and weren't working, have flipped. Which I think is probably the the way it's going to stay. Energy committee, they are talking about doing several workshops in the fall. They want to do one about solar, like another solar petting zoo, but include other interesting things like electric snow blowers and things like that. One about battery storage, I believe, but personal battery storage for if you have solar. And then another oh, how to HVAC. So if you have a, if you have a mini-split or whatever, how do you run it most efficiently? Because everybody's, you know, like, turning them up and cranking them up and whatever, so they want to do something for the homeowner to figure out how to best use their equipment. It's great. And they are talking about perhaps doing another solarized Canterbury program like they did back a few years, perhaps including battery storage this time, which would be great. They haven't started talking about that yet. And there's still a lot of energy devoted towards window dressers. And they are talking again about revisiting the municipal complex audit that was done a few years back, and I'm afraid, Ken, I'm gonna have to sit with you again and go through that list because I checked some of them, but I didn't check all the items off that they asked me about. But that was a pretty short discussion. But they, they, you know, are very excited about doing workshops and also Ruth has been attending the Soul Smart, some of those seminars with Fred Portnoy. So they're, they are busy and they have a lot going on. CCPC are down to two members. Fred Portnoy and Timmy and myself as the board's selectman rep. We needed to have two people be reps for Community Power New Hampshire. Edgar has agreed to be one of those reps.
Thank you, Edgar.
Beth McGuinn has agreed to be the second one. They both, I sent them a letter today and they both replied yes, so we can do those appointments slips whenever.
So my suggestion, Edgar, is decide who's gonna be the primary representative.
It's gonna be Beth.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And a lot of their meetings, as I, as I said, both Beth and Edgar, the schedule from their calendar, you can zoom into most of the meetings. There's two important, there's the next meeting on the thirteenth is kind of a how-to of setting the rates. And then there's another meeting, what was it, Ken, on like the twenty-sixth, that's actually
For the rates.
The information about setting the rates, so.
I knew it was coming up.
Oh, that's coming up. Tricentennial, I guess, I can still report on that since
Please do, I've got a little bit too, but
Yeah. They certainly have got, well, last meeting, we, you know, kind of said they're not a town committee anymore, they're under the historic committee, Historic Society. They've got two great enthusiastic chairpeople. Heidi Suther is a force to be reckoned with. She is taking great notes and coming up with all kinds of calendars and ways to attract interest in the events. Lots of ideas. I stepped down as secretary from that committee, but they've already found Renee Brooks from Heritage Herbs, who has stepped up. They're, Heidi and Naomi are very pleased for first, so aren't so, the committee says going great guns, lots of, lots of ideas.
All right. I'll start with tricentennial committees since that's where you left off. The only thing to add is we have been doing an art contest at the elementary school with the kids.
Oh, yeah.
I had the three finalists at my house, not the kids, but the finalists. I should clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
But the, I'm very impressed with what they've done. So Naomi has images, I'm not sure exactly how she wants to handle, but the tricentennial committee is gonna vote for the winner.
Okay.
And then the final day of school, the final assembly, is when we'll announce the winner.
Oh, when is that?
The nineteenth of June, eight-thirty that day. So, right, that day. I imagine it'll be a pretty quick
Nineteenth of June.
Pretty quick assembly that day.
And I'm still, I'm hoping, well, if Naomi doesn't send out that reminder to us all, because it'd be nice if as many members of the tricentennial committee could be there. Would you remind her to remind us?
I certainly will. I emailed her a couple times today, so.
That would be good.
Yeah, I just add one more to it. No, nineteen, paper. So the only other thing that I have is planning board. So I'll start with the older of the two meetings that I've been to. That the May thirteenth meeting, the planning board approved a minor subdivision at five twenty-seven Northwest Road. An eleven-acre parcel that they're gonna be dividing into two five-and-a-half acre parcels. The kind of unusual thing was two of the planning board members were butters, so they accused themselves, one, one full member in the all unit. We barely had a forum with the two members missing. And then at that same meeting, there was a pre-conceptual presentation by Webb Stoudt on behalf of Ken Stern. It's going to be an application for a minor subdivision on Baptist Hill Road. The intent is to divide two lots from map R nine lot fifty-five directly across from two eighty Baptist Hill Road. And that'll probably be coming in the fall when Webb returns.
All right.
May twenty-seventh meeting, there was a discussion about a draft sludge ordinance. So more to follow on that as we sort of narrow that down. Discussion of the addition of chapter nine to the master plan, which is the solid waste section. It was sort of a general critique by the members. And after a little bit of back and forth, corrections were going to be emailed to the, to Michelle, so. We also discussed the capital improvement plan. And at some point, I maybe wanna sort of have a discussion about that, so maybe right after this.
Sure.
And tying in with what Ken is gonna talk about, Mike Charter suggested public meetings to get public input to that. And then the HOP grant, the Housing Opportunity Grant. We discussed, and that's looking at land use regulations. And then we talked about the land use regulations and with the current bills in the State House. The decision was made to just sort of wait and see what happens. Because several of those bills will affect what we do, so that made sense to me. So that's it?
But?
But?
My last committee.
Okay, oh, I thought you were
I was not. Solid Waste Committee is the last committee that I sit on.
Oh, yes.
So I'm, I'm not quite sure how to report on this committee, but I'll do my very best.
You did it to begin.
So I've, I've gone to four meetings. We talked a lot about planning Household Hazardous Waste Day. And then that was, that planning went through the first three meetings and then the meeting on the twenty-sixth on Memorial Day was a wrap-up of the household waste. I think we all got a summary from Rich about how that went. So it seemed to be a success. People wanted more of it and want more of them more regularly. So I think that was, that was really good. The handouts that the, that were provided were really good, and I have copies of those. So the town can make more copies and have them available at the town office and stuff, because they were very good about phone recycling and battery recycling and old plastics and whatever, so. They were prepared for the Household Hazardous Waste event, but they are good year-round, so we'll move those
Right.
along. Also talked about the, trying to organize the treasure house, and I think after discussion, the committee is just as happy if it goes back to being primarily the treasure house committee volunteers dealing with Dave at the transfer station to see what's appropriate to have there and what he, what, what shouldn't be there.
I guess one question before you move on with that is, how would the committee, I don't recall ever appointing anyone to a treasure house committee?
No, they're just a kind of organic citizens group, I believe, that just, and that's what we were trying to figure out, that that, I don't know when it opened, but that's, we can find. I didn't investigate that, but
Was it post-COVID? Didn't it kind of emerge after the COVID?
No, I mean, the treasure house originally.
Oh.
Treasure house originally, it went forever. No, 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 I think, it, it ramped up and then, you know, Emily Burb started it again, and she was a member of the solid waste committee, so she brought that information back to that committee, but it wasn't nobody was really sure about how it was shooting up. So I think it just kind of, if we can clarify. Adrian Hutchinson did show up at the Memorial Day meeting, and she did ask who's the operator, who's got an operator's license up at the transfer station? And whoever it is who's deciding what should or shouldn't be there should be a licensed operator, so it still seemed appropriate that Dave be involved mostly with the committee. And then Madeline Lowe has been very enthusiastic about getting volunteers, and I think she will probably be the point person for the, I haven't talked with her further, but she put in a very extensive item into the newsletter asking about, asking for volunteers and, you know, saying what they accepted or didn't accept. I think she's going to be the point person, but I'll, I can contact her more formally and say if that's something she's interested in. The, the problem, the, the concern that's been ongoing with my time on this committee has been I think the flow of information. And the feeling from the committee that the work that they've done has not been appreciated or recognized. They say this very strongly. They have very strong feelings about this. They were not they do not seem to appreciate, I guess would be a good word, when information is brought to them that they don't have, like their mission statement or some history that Ken showed up at the meeting and provided to them. This was not, this was not received with, oh, thank you, that's something we didn't know. The overall feeling was that they weren't they were more suspicious about why we were giving them this information. And in fact, one comment was, you know, why are we only getting this after, after we've pushed back to the board of selectmen? So I don't, I don't really understand that feeling about information being provided. And our conversations have been dicey at best, I guess. The twenty-sixth, the meeting of the twenty-sixth was very combative. A lot of the second half of the meeting was directed towards me as far as hijacking the committee's agenda since I had arrived there. And basically fabricating a narrative of the work that they have done. Because I questioned when, that going through two years of their minutes, I couldn't see how they got from so dedicated to retrofitting the transfer station in place to presenting an idea that it needed to. I couldn't understand that. And my questioning wasn't answered. It was not appreciated. So in, in general, it was a very combative meeting. It wasn't pleasant. It went long, and there were statements, I think, that were not helpful about the board of selectmen handpicking the committee members by appointing Megan, who was not, who did not come from the committee, but was appointed by us, and that was not appreciated. And the fact that it was considered to be us handpicking their committee as opposed to trying to help their committee, again, doesn't help the process. So again, the, the meeting was extremely combative. The minutes that are posted online, while accurate, I do not reflect the aggressive tone of the second half of the meeting. So I don't know quite how to make comments on those minutes, helpfully. So I think it's important that the minutes do reflect a certain tone of the meeting so that people looking back. And this has been my point all along, those minutes, any committee's minutes, should reflect the work that the committee is doing. If committee members are going to explore the possibilities of something and come back and report to their committee, that should be in the minutes. Either a copy of the report referenced or the summary of the report that was given. And those are not often found in their minutes, which is a problem I have with them. And, and that's part of the, that's part of the point when I was told I was fabricating the narrative, because obviously I hadn't read the minutes, which I had read two years' worth of minutes. So I find that difficult to work with. I am willing to still pursue this because, again, I think the committee has merit. And I think the committee has a lot of good expertise. But if they are unwilling, if this committee is unwilling to take direction from the board of selectmen, which I, which I felt at that meeting, they made very clear that they did not want to, I don't know how that goes forward. I did ask, and I think I sent this to you all for us to discuss. The chair was very firm that the, the list of current projects that's on the website proves the work that they've been doing. So I made a copy of that list and I would like evidence of their discussions pertaining to these, because some of them I didn't see. So to their what their explanation was is that if we investigated something that wasn't going to work, we didn't bother to bring it to the board of selectmen. Adrian was very clear, as was Megan, as was I, that if you have an idea that you've investigated, even if it doesn't work, you should bring it up so people don't investigate it again. So I'm asking, and, and I will let us all decide if we all want to ask for them to show evidence of the things that they have listed on as their current projects, which, which I think should be easy for them to supply. I think that's, that's pretty basic. Which has a big file of research, which is fine if you have a big file of research, but that's not a public record that we can look at to see what the committee's been doing. So I think they investigated a lot of pertinent issues at the transfer station. I just don't think that we heard about it as much as is helpful. So you should both have a copy of this and if, once we go through it and, and look at it, and I've added a few things that, again, I think as a board, we should I'll speak for myself, that I think that this committee should be focusing on. They wanted to take out the last paragraph of the mission statement, which was primarily concerned with education. And I think education should be a big part of what they do, even things like how do we recycle in this town, or what's the importance of that, also hazardous waste day or best practices for recycling. I mean, if you're concerned about how much time people are spending, sitting in line waiting for people to separate the recycling, then it would be a good thing to reach out and say, you know, to tell all the news sources in town, please recycle, separate your stuff before you get here, this is what you do, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, so on the whole, I think for the four meetings I was there, they attended to a certain amount of business. But there was a lot of discussion about basically why I was asking questions. So I think going forward, again, if they're willing to accept questions and, and supply evidence to the work they've been doing like everybody else is expected to do, I think that's fine, but and I did extend an invitation from the board of selectmen because they were very concerned that we weren't hearing their concerns for the committee as a whole to come into a future meeting, and I think that was the And I think that was the sixteenth. The sixteenth. So if we agree that that's a good thing, Rich kind of thought perhaps it should be a discussion held more privately. I believe the whole committee should be able to weigh in on the work that they've done. And that if we're going to say, can you please provide us with a, a list of what you've been working on, it's up for them to say in a, in a public forum, yes, we will or no, we won't. I think that's pretty basic. And so willing to go forward from there. I think Megan will be a good addition to the group. I was glad to see Adrian there. She added some good commentary. She has experience. She can't make the meetings because of her commitments at the school, but it, she brought up some good points and she was a good voice to hear. David has also brought up some good points when he was there, also about future planning for budgeting for household hazardous waste days. You know, how you could better do that to have them more regularly. Rich brought that up as well. So I mean, I think that's a, that's a good discussion to have because it was obvious that the desire for more of them was really strong.
Yeah.
So. That's my report as best I can do it.
All right. So looking, looking ahead to the sixteenth, how much time do we want to budget for?
I was thinking, would it be more productive if we could all just attend their first July meeting? If we attended their meeting, maybe they could push their hour meeting to a two-hour window as opposed to taking up two hours at eight o'clock at night. You know, time, timing was, I think it'd be more productive. It was an afternoon and people are in a better headspace and not necessarily tired or stressed out of the day.
I think, I think that's good. I have seen that it does, I don't know what the commitments are for committee members. They seem very keen on keeping it to an hour. So.
Except for the last meeting.
Except for the last meeting, which did. And then at the, at the end, there was a lot of commentary about that. So I don't know what other people's job commitments are, but that were very correct. If that's, if we want to go and, can the three of us go into a?
What's the date of the July meeting?
It is not the ninth. I'm not sure.
Julie, the Monday, the second, third Monday of the month.
July fourteenth. Fourteenth, Kevin?
Yep.
And that's the three.
Right there.
The here.
So there's not one, hold on.
Is there one in June?
Yes. We didn't, we're not meeting on the ninth because Richard's traveling. And then the next one, I believe, is the twenty-third. So that's their next meeting, which is on Monday.
But they've still come to the sixteenth, but I guess if there was more.
Wait a minute, what's our meetings are? Here we are on the ninth and the twenty-third. Oh, wait, they must be the sixteenth and the thirtieth.
The next meeting is June twenty-third.
All right. And then after that, their meeting is July fourteenth. The June ninth meeting was canceled. Was canceled, all right. So it is the twenty-third and the fourteenth. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know what's on the agenda for the twenty-third, but this seems like it would be a pretty good topic for them. If we say we would like to come to your twenty-third meeting, I can see how it could easily take up that.
Yeah.
If that's.
Well, that's my concern about them coming to our next select meeting. My Calvin said, two hours. That's a very long night. How's our budget, or budget, how's our agenda look for that meeting?
Well, we'll be starting at five P.M.
Yeah.
Starting our next meeting. And there's the department heads. And I don't think there are any other appointments yet. You could do, you could do a format of like each person gets five minutes to say their piece and we bring the tiger out and total of like thirty minutes budgeted for this conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind going into their meeting if, if you think that makes more sense.
Either way, for me, yeah.
I can do either.
Yeah.
It's, it, yeah. I guess the, the only question would be is, does anybody need any more time to prepare anything but the twenty-third? Why don't we just do, I'm not exactly sure what else they would be talking about. And I think it would be best to, to get things settled, one way or the other.
Agreed.
So if the sixteenth is a crowded day for us, why don't we go visit them on the twenty-third? And then it's an hour and the twenty-third is a day.
Well, I had, we had, we received a message from Cisco asking me to come to you and meet with you guys at the meeting, references report. I, we put him off for this meeting because I had thought that you were going to meet with them on the sixteenth. But I can.
I'll tell you what, why don't, why don't we do this? The, the sixteenth is the next date. It's the soonest we can meet with them.
Yeah.
Let's keep that.
All right.
We can have Roy come. I, I guess my concern for all of them is we can't turn this into a, you know, a two-hour airing of the grievances.
Hey, as Cal said, you have to put time zones on it and hold strictly.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Well, and I think.
And we can, I'll, I'll reach out to do a full limitation.
Yeah.
And let them know what their argument and time limits.
Yeah.
So they can, and I, I can talk to Rishvaku and.
Yeah.
Just say, look, we have other things on the agenda. And please have all your concerns in order. And, you know, do it that way.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure it would be a bad, if it would be a bad idea to send our concern, you know, our, well, I don't know, to reach out to them beforehand when we send the invitation, say, this is what we would like to talk about and include.
Like if you guys want to send me.
Yeah.
I don't know, individually send me whatever, like a bulleted list.
Yeah.
And I'll put something together and send it to them. And, and in the interest of time, probably two or three things from each one of you and a priority. And then I'll, you know, we don't want to put a dozen or so.
No.
Concerns, but, but a few that we can, they can focus on, I guess.
And, and I can think of just one and, and, you know, the answer to that question might decide the whole conversation. So.
Okay.
But I think everybody appreciates a heads up about what somebody's going to talk to them about before they get to a meeting. Then they have time to consider what they might want to say and if they want to pull anything together beforehand. I think that's just polite.
Yeah.
So, yeah. We can do that and just keep them on the sixteenth.
Yeah. Let's do it that way.
Thank you. And if any, I don't know if anybody had any other questions about meetings or anything.
No.
Okay. Tom?
I'm good.
Okay.
We wanted to talk about the capital plan.
Yeah.
So following what Scott said about the planning board, the capital plan. Michelle had talked to me about what central hatchery planning had posed about a community involvement, I guess is what they talk about in the CIP. I contacted the chair of the planning board and we discussed that. I feel that the CIP is a, it's a public document, but it's also developed internally by the department heads and the staff at the town office. This is long-term planning, budgeting based on the age and the, I guess, the condition of all the equipment and buildings in town. Typically, a capital plan is for larger communities that have community water, community sewer, looking at the infrastructure and, and the potential costs, working from the master plan to see what may be recommended by the master plan, either future development. And if there's going to be future development, how the town can budget for that through the infrastructure. So for the town the size of Canterbury, we look at, we get it down to the nitty-gritty trucks and boat, loaders and things like that. We also do the buildings. So I, I felt that, that having some kind of community involvement would just delay the process of approving the CIP for this year. And, and probably not get a lot of information that would be helpful for the, for the CIP. Because it's such a, it's a budgetary document. And I think that, that the department heads and the staff and the planning board are more in tune with the needs of, of the community as far as, what are we going to need to dump truck? You know, what's the condition of our food, things like that. And that, that again, looking at the master plan that the planning board worked hard to, to complete and the community involvement for that is really a blueprint for that CIP. And Brendan agreed with me. And so he was going to contact central hatchery planning and suggest that they not have a community involvement strictly for the CIP. It would be based on the HOPE grant stuff. And.
That makes more sense.
And, and then certainly the, the CIP is, that the planning board is working on with the central hatchery planning is a public meeting. So all that is out there. So if people are interested in it, they can contact the planning board or, or whatever and, and comment on it. But in, in the essence of time and getting the thing completed is, is I think, it would be more efficient if we didn't try to have a community involvement just for the CIP.
And how often do we need to update the CIP? Is that a yearly? It's kind of ongoing every time we have it.
Typically, it's ongoing. I, I, I mean, as part as, part of a budget process, I put together with the department heads, a condition of the fleet and the equipment. If there's improvements or changes that need to be done for the buildings, that's again, part of the budget process. So it's an ongoing issue or an ongoing process. Every five years or every, every ten years, when a master plan is supposed to be redone, then the CIP should be looked at by the planning board. But typically, it's, it's reviewed by the staff and the department heads every year to determine, you know, you know, what, what we should be planning for. I think we, we do a pretty good job every year with putting away money in the capital reserve accounts.
Right.
And like, you know, like providing the fire truck where we can, we don't have to contribute for the next five years because of the age of the other fire trucks. And in five years, we're going to have to start. We've essentially done a lot of that work.
Right.
So, but I think that's, that's how that works.
Does things like the traffic study work in there too to say like, okay, we can see by the amount of traffic increase that, you know, the population is in there? How does like population figure into it?
So typically, if there's a, if the planning board were to approve a, a large project, say, say the, the proposed multi-family work project that was, they wanted to do now, that was proposed now on, on West Road.
Oh, yeah.
If that was on a town road or impacted town services, then that would be taken into consideration. The planning board should talk to the staff at the town office and say, look, we just approved this project. We think it's going to have an impact on fire, police, highway, whatever. And then that part, that becomes part of the CIP. So again, it's an ongoing project. But like when the community, on the Economic Development Committee worked on the Hall Road project and that, that industrial commercial land was all rezoned, that was something that, and I don't know, because I wasn't working at that time here, but that should be, that's a project that should impact the CIP because that may impact the needed services of the town. We may, if somebody's going to build a big industrial building, we may need different firefighting equipment. If there's going to be a large private school or, or something where there's going to be a needed increase for the police department, that should be discussed. Those types of things should be brought up at the CIP from the planning board.
Do they take into consideration the house bills that are going through? The potential impact that would have? Or is that moot point until it gets voted on?
I, well, I, I would, yes, yes to the first part of your question and yes to the second part of your question. Nobody knows what's going to happen in Congress, so it's kind of hard to say, well, how's this going to impact our town until you actually know?
I just know that had a contingency of like, okay, if this does go through, how do we look at next one?
Yeah, right, exactly. Where, you know, one of the bills is saying that residential building and commercial by rights. And how could that impact the town? Yeah, should it be taken into account when you're doing a commercial, a, a CIP? Yeah. But how do you do that?
Until you know.
Yeah.
But that's all pretty short term. Don't you think that'll probably, they'll vote and.
And again, I mean, if, if, if that, if some of these bills do go, start moving forward and the planning board starts getting proposals on, you know, large housing developments or whatever, then that's something that, again, we look at this, we can look at the CIP every year and say, well, geez, we should work on this next year because there's going to be some impacts to it.
Sure.
We'll know July, the status of all of those.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, it seems to make more sense to keep it, you know, the, the people who have the numbers most at hand.
Yeah.
And the equipment that they are familiar with most at hand and are dealing with it due to work with the planning board or.
Yeah, and not to discount what the, what the residents and taxpayers have their thoughts on, but they don't know how many miles are on a dump truck or, you know.
Or what that means.
Right, exactly what that means.
Ten thousand miles? I don't know if that's a lot on a dump truck.
Exactly. Same thing for police cruisers and fire trucks and things like that. The typical resident doesn't have that kind of information.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, I mean, if, if there was a, somebody that was very old, versed in capital plan plans that wanted to have some input, then, then again, the, the planning board has public meetings and they have that opportunity to talk to the planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Makes sense. All right. I think, Ken, unless you were new business Cushmanell?
Yes. Beth asked me to look into.
Thank you.
The Cushmanell, because of some dead branches on it. We talked to Bartlet Tree. They came out, they have been treating the tree now for.
Years.
Many years. Yeah, I don't know, probably fifteen or twenty years. So. They have a new representative that I sent you an email earlier today. I don't know if you guys got a chance to see it?
I did.
He recommended some, I thought, fairly extreme measures to take, take care of that tree. I, I think that, you know, it, it gets a Dutch LZ treatment every other year and then a root invigoration treatment every other year. So they, they switch off.
Yeah.
You know, from his email, he suggested to remove all sod under the canopy and put in a, some kind of watering system, you know, soaker hose and cover it with four inches of, of wood chips under the whole canopy. So.
It was pretty major.
Yeah, the tree is three feet from the road. So we could only, even then, we could only go up to the.
Shoulder.
To the shoulder. And because it's within a certain amount of feet of a cemetery, you have to have state permission and an archaeologist if you're going to dig even outside the cemetery bounds.
Oh.
I, I can't remember how many feet it is, but there is a law that says if you're going to do that. When they fixed the culvert on Kibble Pond Road, the state had to have an archaeologist on site while they're digging it up.
Interesting.
Because it was in that range. I think that we could probably. Um, I think that we could probably achieve similar, uh, results and maintain the tree. We run into a dry spell by asking the fire department to come down and maybe a couple of weeks and, and water, water around it, you know, put a hundred gallons of soda water on it.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I just wondered, you guys, to look at all of that. He didn't feel the tree was in any danger from Dutch L disease. Um, he felt that, that attending to the watering of it was probably the best thing we could do for it.
Yeah.
Certainly so far this year, watering is not a, I, that was a conversation, that was a conversation he and I had and, you know, Saturday night, we had another, another-
Not after that rainstorm we had on Sunday.
I agree. I agree.
Oh, speaking of which, um, can I jump in here for a second and ask, do you have any, um, update on Cardale Road? After that?
Uh, I did drive down there today and the highway department did do a little work down there.
Okay.
There was a fairly significant, uh, washout on the south side of Cardale Road just before Pike Road.
Yeah.
And, uh, the highway department did get down there and did some work, but they didn't get it all done. They're gonna have to back it up this material.
Okay, thank you. Kushman?
Yeah. All right, I think we're now at old business gazebo update. Yeah, so I left a voicemail, uh, on Mr. Baker's phone on the seventh of May asking him if he was going to be able to complete the work that he was asked to do this spring. And I have not gotten any reply yet. So it's been almost a month.
Yeah.
Um, I can try again if you'd like.
Is, um, is that the only way to contact him?
That's, I have a phone number for him.
No email?
No.
Okay.
What's left for work, anything?
The posts, one of the posts had some rock on it.
There's a couple of the posts that had rock that he was going to check in.
We had asked him, it was gonna be extra money, but we asked him if he could do it. And he said yes last fall, and, uh, but I have not heard back from him.
Um, I know that I can be bad at listening to voicemails. Um, would you like a, I'll get a, I'll get an email.
Okay.
So we can, we can follow up on it.
And we did have a request, um, from Dale Pauswell. He felt that, uh, we should pay attention to the roof. He thinks that we might wanna have a, try and put some money aside in next year's budget to do the move over.
What's wrong with it?
I, I don't know. He stopped at the town office and felt that, that the roof is getting tough shape and that we should put some money in the budget to-
I didn't talk to him. I don't know if it was structural or if it was just shakes.
I think it's probably the, the wooden shakes, I'm guessing.
Oh, is that what that is? I never thought that's wooden shakes.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't look at it, I didn't get a chance to look at it or anything, but, but he had a suggestion. He also wanted to make sure that, um, that at the fair this year, that they did not remove any of the railings because he felt they're structural and that if they do, that it could pose a problem to the structure.
I-
They were removed last year.
Yes.
He has some concerns about that.
Well, that was part of the whole conversation about repairing the gazebo to the bandstand to begin with. But when I stopped by, when Mr. Baker was actually working on the gazebo, those things are glued and screwed in there. They're, they're not coming off unless-
The railings.
The railings. They are, I believe that he designed them not-
Permanently attached.
Yeah, they're, they're glued and screwed, glued and screwed. Um, so, um, I think, um, it might be a good reminder to the fair committee not to attempt to remove them, but I, I don't, I don't believe that that's on, they're, they're, that's not in their plans.
Okay.
But I can certainly pass out of one.
Does he want to remove the posts for the rock? Are we talking scabbed and?
I don't know. I, I didn't go over and look at the posts. I don't know what-
It's down around the bottom, of course, where the-
Pretty punky.
But there's, but there's big metal that goes up in the middle of the post, so there was, there was a lot of discussion about how you intend to that because you just can't cut them off and put in a piece because there's metal going up. So, um, that's what he was going to look at.
I mean, you could scab and use like epoxy rod remover or, you know, a filler essentially.
Sure.
I'm just serious. If we're talking the structural integrity of a building-
And that I-
They don't pull out the posts or how they all invest it.
No, they're not, they're not structural. It's just rotty around the bottom where the water's been, you know, for years bouncing up on the bottom of the post.
And I guess I, I thought that, that he was gonna look at them and come back with an estimate-
Yes.
To see, and let them, let us know what he was gonna have to do to fix it and, and an estimate of what the cost was.
Yeah. Okay, we'll get an email, we can follow up on-
Okay.
The voicemail, that would be great.
All right.
It doesn't get any wetter and rottier.
Especially this year.
Yeah.
Again. All right, code of conduct.
Um, so you all have a copy of the revised draft? Most of, it's changed pretty significantly since the last time, but it's mostly reorganizing the things that were already there, reformatting things to try to make it easier to look at. Um, and removing redundancy because there were like a couple of different policies that got combined into one document. So there's a lot of saying the same thing over and over again. Um, I think we're pretty close on this. Um, so I didn't get it to you in, in time to review, so if you could take this document, review it and send me back, um, edits and then maybe we'll have maybe a final draft next time, depending on how significant the edits are that, um, are proposed.
Well, what's nice is that, um, even without reading it, it looks very clean. It's broken up into, into, um, paragraphs that are, you know, each one has a purpose and it's very clean. Um, and it's not so long that the purpose of the paragraph is buried somewhere down, you know, in eight lines. Um, so I, I appreciate reading a document like this and I think a lot of people probably would. It's not off-putting. So that's, that's great. Thank you. That's a lot, that's a lot to pick through something in the fruit salad and make it a single fruit.
Yeah. And I think one decision we should think about, and we had some discussions about it, is moving forward. Um, what is our intent gonna be with having people look at this document that are newly appointed committee members? And do we want to have them sign it? What do we do if they refuse to sign it? I don't think we have much over people that are elected. But certainly we do want the people that were appointed.
Um, I don't know. I mean, we, we talked about this a little bit and I think we even talked a little bit with, with town council then. It's not like it's enforceable, but I think it's just, um, a sign of good faith that yes, I've taken this and yes, I've read it. And that's all, you know, and I think we, we should make that clear, um, that anybody, and, and they should be available at the town offices or on the website for anybody to look at. And anybody who's running for an office when they come in to Sam to sign the book should get a copy of it.
I agree.
Hey, please take this and, you know, come back and sign the book back if you've read it or read it here and just say I have.
Um, you, you could also change the equipment because it has, there is an oath built into it. That's why they have to sign it in front of Sam and it's not prescribed by RSA. So you could say, you could include like, I agreed to follow the code of conduct.
Yep.
Something like that.
Or at least I have read the code of con-
Yeah.
However we wanted to word it. Yeah, I would, I would make it an essential part. If, if it's, if it's important enough to draft it and to say, these are our values, then I think it's important enough. That's pretty basic for somebody who wants to represent the town to say, yeah, I've read this and, yeah, I agree.
All right.
Thank you, Cal. You mashed this into a much better shape.
All right, we're at healthcare for employees.
Ooh, yeah.
Um, in the old business folder, there's another packet. There's only one?
Gotcha, yeah, okay. We can share.
So is this the results of your polling or is this the more information from?
Yes, so it's both. If you unfold that larger piece of paper, that is the, the one that we looked at previous and it has all the votes on the bottom of it.
Great.
People fight for, they vote for option four, which is the buyout. Um, several people-
Gonna?
I just-
The people who, who wanted options one or two, really wanted options one or two. Um, there's an email from the lawyer there, um, because he asked them for advice on this and it sounds like the, um, options three and four might require a lot more thought than we were expecting. Um, especially option four where the lawyer thinks that we may need to build that stipend into the calculation for overtime. Um, and so we, it looks like option three and four need some more thought. Um, one suggestion was to maybe go with option one and then, because that's the, that's keeping the exact same plan that they currently have, but it only gets us to the end of the year. So doing that for the rest of the year and then spending that extra six months actually fleshing out option four so that we make sure we have it right. And there's also a noticing component to it. If you stop offering health insurance, then I guess we have to do some noticing ahead of time to let employees know.
Yeah.
Um, so if you decided on doing option one, which is stay with the current thing for the rest of 2025 with the intention that in 2026, you do option four, which is buyout for everybody, but that'll give us time to work with the lawyers and work with the accountants and figure out the taxes and figure out the noticing and make sure everything's done legally. Um, and then you could also reoffer the, the buyout that's already currently offered.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that way, anybody who decides that they don't want to continue with this option can do the buyout that we already offer.
Yeah.
Um, one thing of the buyout that we already offer is that we found out that we're supposed to be handling the taxes for it differently than we have been. So, um, we have to redo quarter one, um, for the buyout that was done and we need to do quarter two differently. And, um, so if you could agree that we increase the buyout from the sixty-five hundred to sixty-five hundred plus, will be taken out in taxes. That way, people are given the same amount. Um, just like with the wages discussion we did before. It was like, if we're gonna have social security, Medicare taken out, then you add that one point seven five and that six point something onto it.
Yeah.
Um, that way, the employee has the same take home as before.
Yeah.
Well, that seems to make it, you know, when time is short, which it is, to be able to stay with option one, so one, nobody freaks out, everybody's covered and then give us the time to make a better decision, seems like that's a pretty good way to.
Is there a minimum amount of employees for healthcare? I know the town only has a handful as it is, but say we want to keep option one permanently, do we have to have a minimum amount of people covered to keep that option?
I know a lot of insurers do that, you know.
We, uh, I know Calvin asked me this morning and I didn't get a chance to talk with Harvard Pilgrim or, or the school care.
Okay.
That was not part of their proposal. There was nothing that said we had to have a minimum amount of employees to do that. Um, that was never part of the health trust or in H I P. They never said you have to have ten or fifteen or whatever. It was a little minimum amount. Um, I have that in my to-do list to contact, uh, school care to see. And that would be one of the questions we would ask if we were gonna go with the school care option one and, um, and then option buyout besides that.
Yeah, I would just hate for it to be an all or nothing or we would opt for a buyout and then we're trying to hire people and hey, lose eight hundred extra bucks every month like.
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So what do we need to decide about this tonight?
So I, you have to decide when you're gonna operate on it.
So that's it. Tonight, this is the, this is the-
This is it.
Okay, just checking. Want to make sure that we need to actually-
Good. And I think what I'm hearing is it makes the most sense at this point to go with option one for the rest of the year and then keep the buyout where it is now, except that we're going to keep the employees whole with respect to taxes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then if you can decide on which direction you want to go for 2026, then we can do our research and make sure we get everything over.
When does that decision have to be made for twenty-sixth November?
During budgeting, so.
Yeah, so we'll have that time.
I suppose it's an enrollment period or a buyout.
Right, right. And if, if you guys are leaning towards that, let us know because that will give us, the more time we have to, to research, the better off we will have on this for employees and the town.
Well, it still seems like the bulk of the employees, their choice is option four. So we move us to go with that. So, um, that's, that still seems like the best plan for both time and, um, support.
Yeah.
True.
And, and we, could we opt, is school care, if, there's so many different options. Um, is school care the option one? Could, if we wanted to, could we just stay on the, is that one that will be available going forward? Or is that another one that's-
As long as they're in business.
As long as they're in business.
Yeah, school care, as long as they're in business, but the Harvard Pilgrim on it, I think they're just being nice for this year.
Okay.
So it would have to change to stick now.
They would, yeah, they're, they're offering, right, they're offering-
So at the moment, this particular option one is just for this year, which is really all we need.
Probably, unless they decide to change.
Okay.
Right. Yeah.
So that could just option one become option two? Is it that school care signal? Okay, okay.
The S A U uses school care?
Uh, I'm not sure if S A U uses it. I know, uh, Rachel, um, a survey amongst a bunch of other towns that were on any trajectory and most of them are switching to school care.
Just wasn't sure if it's an bulk discount. If we, if we use it in the school district, might get employees on it. Is there a benefit to that or?
It doesn't really seem to be bulk discounts, um, in general. Because like I looked at, so I looked on healthcare.gov and you can actually get the same Harvard Pilgrim plan that we currently have on healthcare.gov and it would cost you the exact same amount-
Gotcha.
Um, per month, unless you qualify for like the tax rebate, in which case it would be cheaper for you. But it doesn't look like they're actually giving discounts to businesses that get group insurance. And I don't know.
I, I think they would look at, if we had two hundred employees or something, they might look at it differently, but typically, the way our healthcare, the way it used to work, at least with the health trust, um, we are put in a pool of light towns and then they use, it's a complicated formula, but they use the pool as well as, of light towns, as well as our experience. And they combine those two calculations to determine what our, what our rates are gonna be. We, we, we might possibly also have the option of going back to the health trust in two thousand twenty-six. Their board of directors did not make a decision in time to make the change this year or, or at this time.
Yeah.
They haven't made any decisions. I don't know if they're gonna discuss it further because of their two-year lockout that they have with the U B.
But it's still fairly early in the year. I mean, by, by the time we need to decide again at the end of the year, all kinds of things.
It would be nice, it would give us time to, to look at a whole bunch of different options.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, certainly we can, we will, you know, a lot, the majority of our employees are leaning towards that option four, if given the opportunity. And we will certainly do our diligence on, on that work.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll look at other things too.
Yeah.
Okay. So they're leaning towards it for future, but for now, they wouldn't mind staying whole on the plan that we have. At least it's familiar, they've already got it.
I, I think as, I think if, if given the information that we're not sure what the implications are for option four, um, that you guys would take option four off the table this time, even though the majority of the employees might want it, uh, because of the complications that might go along with it, I don't, I don't feel it's a good option, I don't feel it's a good option for us today.
Today, exactly.
Today.
And, um-
It may be, it may be in six months from now.
Yeah.
But today, I, I don't think it's a good option for the town. Maybe, maybe in six months from now, but today, I don't think it's a good option for the town. Yeah, we don't know, we don't know all the implications on it.
But it's certainly with this, with this amount of people that, as you say, we've got the time to look at it and work here.
And, yeah.
And think, so that's, I think that's, you know, do we need to make a motion to that effect? You're the motion maker?
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we go with option one for those employees that take the insurance and that we keep the buyout as is with the addition of making them whole with respect to taxes. Almost a day later.
Hi. Do we have to say with the understanding that we'll be spending, well, it's reflected in the minutes, the understanding that we'll be...
Yeah, we'll be investigating everything.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yep.
All righty, hi.
All right, two names. Cal, can you want this back? Yeah, if you put it back, of course. Yep, yep. All right, we are at...
Update.
Update on sale of town-owned property. Yes, so the original offer was March 17. You had given Mr. McGoon 39 days to make the decision or for the sale. The title company has raised some concerns because the previous owner passed away in Massachusetts and there was a little probate done. We have supplied all the information that we got. Our attorneys drafted the deed and required signed, notarized letters from each of the children that was listed in the will as beneficiaries of the will. And we got all that, and we passed that on to the title company. And they still have some concerns about it. So they're working on that with Mr. McGoon. He called me today, and they're not gonna make the June 17 deadline. He'd like an extension on that deadline. I don't know, I said, well, what do you think, another 90 days? And he said he would hope that it happened by another 90 days. So it's up to you guys if you want to make it 30 days or 60 days or another 90 days. It's up to you guys what you want to do. I mean, to me, no, that...
So none of this has been Mr. McGoon's fault?
No, no, no.
Punishing him for something that's well beyond his control. So does it need to be a formal motion?
No.
Okay, so I mean, certainly, I'm okay with 90 days.
I'm okay with 90 days, just knowing how things go.
Yeah.
I don't think that's unreasonable. It could easily, easily take that long.
Unfortunately.
And he also asked if he could do a test fit on the property. He, I said, well, what do you, he said, well, he's wondering where the parts of the property are at. And he's wondering where he can put a building.
Yep.
And to determine where he can put a building, he's hoping to do a test fit. And it may involve cutting a couple of trees. And I said, well, how far in do you want to go? How many trees you gotta cut? We don't want a big swath down to the middle of the property if the sale doesn't go good.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was like, well, I don't know, that's... Okay, so no other test?
I'm not okay with it.
I would wait to, yeah, just make, where he owns it, test, test the way.
That's fine.
It's not like he's, it's just for where he's gonna put the building, it's not...
Where he would like to put it.
Decide if he wants to buy it or not because he's already decided that.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yep. All right, next item, Bueller Fellowship. Yes, we received A9 from Mr. Davis.
Okay.
Is it in the...
Nope.
Oh. Okay.
Did he have it?
Mandy had it. Mandy did receive it. She didn't make it into the... Okay. We did receive it. Obviously, it's late. I will have it for the next meeting, so you can review it, determine whether you can accept it or not.
Okay.
In the meantime, I know we talked when we met with Mr. Davis about scheduling a site visit. I thought you were gonna have the A9 play, so depending on that, I was gonna try to schedule a site visit with the building inspector and the supervisor. I can still do that before you get it, if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Do we need to physically look at the A9 or can, is that something?
Think you should review it.
I mean, can it just be scanned and...
Oh, we can, we can email it to you.
Yeah, on that way.
Sure, we can do that. And then, and then on the 16 kilo side, whether you accept it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that's good. He sent that in, and so you have our, his assurances that you can now know how to communicate with him and you can get his documents and...
Yeah, and that was the thing. I mean, you had asked him to get it, Mandy sent it to him, and he filled it out and sent it back.
Okay, good. That's a good sign.
Yep. All right, next item, C P C N H representative. I think we sort of talked about that already.
We did, and we don't have... So we talked about, when Sam's here earlier before the meeting, we were trying to remember if it's an appointment slip or it sounds like it might just be a letter. So Ken and I are gonna try to find the last letter that was sent.
Oh, okay.
And make a new one.
So you can make a new appointment? Yep, yep, okay.
And I think that's, and I think it might have been the email I forwarded to you with Beth Liguin's reply that she did request that we communicate with C P C N H to let them know
Yep.
the appointments so that they would know who they were dealing with.
Absolutely.
Everybody would have their, so I'm assuming that letter would do that. Okay, great, thank you.
Very good.
Thanks again, Andrew.
No problem.
All right, next item, library weatherization update. Yep, we received a check for $7,210.
Yay.
Great. That was part of that grant. That's okay. Yep.
Wow.
Yep.
That brings it fast.
We're down.
No, but it does stress the importance of getting ready to paperwork in in timely fashion. So...
All right, what else do we have for our public session?
I just, do you guys have any questions you want me to ask the school board next week? Or any concerns regarding C I P? Or I guess there are any ticket items you want me to address with them or bring up?
I'm gonna have to look through the last couple of bunches of minutes to see what they've been talking about.
Or if you do, just email them to me. That way I touch, I mean, if there's anything you can think over, I won't think over.
So the one suggestion I would have is, I know you're aware of the proposed development at exit 18. Where are they with enrollment at the elementary school?
Well, I know right now kindergarten, early enrollment is at 24. And they usually spike again at the end of June and July when people move in.
Yeah.
And so that was discussed two weeks ago, I think. So enrollment is up.
Right, fifth grade this year...
Non-existent, that's what I thought. But I think the plan was to split, keep the teacher and split the lower classes.
Yeah, but that's probably a good thing to...
First, kindergarten first, you know, for classes. So I believe that's where it is, but I'll touch base on that.
Yeah.
And is the school board still dealing with the bus issue? Or last year, oh?
Yes.
Okay.
From my understanding of that issue is it's out of their control. And the way that it works with the busing is they, the bus company's contracted for the entire district. And unfortunately, Canterbury has one route that services the least amount of kids. So when they're short of driver, they dump that route and they consolidate the kids to the other buses. So unfortunately, with the amount of kids on the buses, we draw the shortest draw.
Which is, which might almost even been, be okay, but it seemed like a lot of the problem was of the communication, letting parents know when that was going to happen.
They did introduce a new app that's supposed to come out where you can track the bus.
Okay.
The accuracy of it, I'm not sure. I don't have kids on the bus we pick up. But you can, if you're a parent, you can say, oh, the bus is on, heck, we're over, it's six minutes away. So they are trying to implement things of that nature. I don't know how they've been implemented yet or that will get ironed out over the summer for next school year. But they are trying new bus things.
We're very vocal about...
It's the reason my kids get picked up and drop off.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So it's, they are working on that, and I can bring that up. Other than that, I mean, I know people, I don't know if this is something to be brought up, but pick up and drop off from the school, traffic issues.
Oh, yeah, because the other day, again, there was a, for a while, there was a police officer station that was keeping waiting parents down in the center. But the other day, the whole line was down the road again, and it's unsuch that ill. And I crept out because I needed to... So that's a school board, but I think that might be us too, trying to figure out how to best manage that traffic.
They can change the way that you pick up and drop off. I mean, my son's school does it completely differently in Concord, and it is, it is a system. I mean, I think there's ways that, I don't know if the town necessarily has to bring it up or maybe the school board, but I think we could try to either expedite or change the way pick up and drop off happens so we can mitigate that traffic. Especially in the winter, it's tricky.
Yeah.
Really tricky.
If you're parked on the hill trying to get up, it's tricky.
But anyway, if you're at the back of the line and you try, you're not picking up a kid, you're trying to go around that line, it's very dicey when you get up to that cross.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's a whole line of sight thing, but...
Yeah.
And have they made any progress on grading?
So the grant.
Or is that something that's also gonna be discussed also?
They've been discussing the problems with grading. From my understanding, I'm not on the school board, but from my point of view and gathered is, the way grading is mandated in state, I could maybe be speaking incorrectly, is the state mandates what type of grading system we use. The district implements how the grading is done, if that makes sense. So it's a district issue, and I know they're trying to address it in each individual school to accommodate the ages of the students. So it's not one-size-fits from kindergarten through 12th grade. They're gonna do a one-size-fits for elementary school. And then middle school's gonna have a slight variation, and then the high school will get a different variation to more accommodate, you know, the student.
And that's, and that's their, that's gonna be their discussion over the summer?
They've been working on that for well over a year now. So it's, yeah. Like I said, I'm not on the board. I just gather.
Okay, all right. Well, and when's your next meeting you said you were going to?
It's next Tuesday at C D S. And then they'll be there again in August.
All right, anything else? Yeah, I'll leave it there. Yep. All right, so I'll make a motion that we turn it to a non-public session to discuss pushing that. Thank you.